Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 13th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. Let's start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I want allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
I have some announcements. I just want to point out the emergency exits are on either side of the room and out back, and as are the restrooms out into the left. Please make sure if you've come in to attend the meeting, sign in. I see most of you probably have, but it's back on the back table. That's even if you're presenting, so you want to make sure everybody's recorded. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with email address and phone number for the Planning Department should you have questions about upcoming events or meetings. Also, on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that we'll be reading this evening along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones and take any conversations you may want to have during any of the meetings and take them outside. And if it's a big group of you, please close the doors so we don't get spillover. And with that... Thanks, Lisa. Do we have any meeting minutes?
No.
Nope. Okay, no meeting minutes for approval. There are two items that had been on the agenda that are, have been removed. One is 1086 Strong Road subdivision has been removed from the agenda. And also, the Van Bortle parking lot expansion has been removed at their request until the October 26th meeting. Boards, committees, town board, zoning, conservation, historical. All right, I guess, Ken, you're up for the next meeting.
So, your next meeting is going to be a Zoom meeting. So, you're all aware, it's on Zoom, and it's on Zoom because there's early voting that week, and this room is being occupied until after 8:00. So, we cannot have our meeting here, and upstairs is not conducive to our technology. So, it will be via Zoom, and that's going to be on October 26th.
Is that on the... Will that be on the website, too, in case people need to know that?
Yes, if it's not already on the website, it will be on the website, and we've tried to notify as many people as we possibly can.
Thanks.
The first public hearing is a carryover. Actually, it's not a public hearing. The public hearing's been closed on the Guinan Major subdivision at 6465 County Road 41. The applicant is requesting approval to subdivide 112 acres into two lots. Then, public hearing for the NIPA charging station at Victor Crossing on Commerce Drive. The applicant is requesting approval to transition five existing parking stalls into four EV charging stations, including a utility transformer and five power cabinets and a switchboard. And then, you talked about Van Bortle being off this agenda. We've carried it over to that agenda. That's for parking lot expansion at 6327 State Route 96. The applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing house with the accessory structures and to extend the parking lot. And then, the fourth public hearing will be for South Gate Hills Phase 2 on East Victor Road. The applicant is requesting approval to construct 15 lots and 10.14 acres under the clustering provisions, which will include all associated utilities and store water management. And then, any carryovers from tonight? Any questions?
Thank you, Kim.
Yep.
Okay, we have a public hearing this evening for 7275 State Route 96. That's for the Baileys Furniture, old Baileys Furniture site, and I believe Scott has to recuse himself this evening.
Yes, I'll recuse myself because I know the family quite well.
Okay. So...
I won't be voting.
Applicants requesting approval to open a manufacturing business in the old Baileys Furniture store, and also requesting a change of use from a furniture to manufacturing. So, with that, floor is yours.
I apologize, I'm not used to doing this, so I don't really know what I need to do other than...
Just tell us what you want to do and why.
So, basically, you want to purchase the facility, turn it into light industrial. What we're going to do is manufacture these guys. They're just little portable laptop stands that are sold on Amazon and various stores like that, online stores. So, essentially, in a nutshell, basically, this product is made in China. China is not doing very well these days. Many companies are trying to pull manufacturing back, one of us, us being one of them. So, this is very light manufacturing, nothing heavy. The metal comes in pre-powder coated, and all we do is cut it, put it together, and package it, send it off to Amazon, or in this case, send it off to Amazon and sell it in a portion of the store up front. So, we're going to take about 2,000 square foot, kind of make it into a retail, and have some of the product that we make in the back being sold up front.
Very straightforward.
Could you state your name?
Sorry, David Nattirelli.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. This is a public hearing. I'll open it up to the board and then go to the public with that. So, Joe, any questions?
I'm glad you brought an example of what you're making. I saw your pictures and your plans, and it's kind of any product. Do you have more stuff in the works that...
Yeah, actually, this... So, there's two lines of work going on. So, laptop stands, they fall under what we call posture improvement devices. So, believe it or not, you know, if you were to sit on a... It would be better if you sat up straight when you used her. So, that's what this product is for. So, there will be a series of products that even a desk, if you want to work standing up, so it elevates up and down. So, all posture-related computer products for the home office, being that COVID, everybody's moved to the house, there's a lot of requirements for that. But there's another side of the business, too, and that is, we make LED lighting, and so we make LED lighting more formally for horticulture. So, EnerSave LEDs, if you went onto our website, you would see, oh my goodness, these guys grow hydroponic hops. So, we do indoor hops for beer growing. So, we sell these kits all around the country. So, in the facility, you would see manufacturing, being assembling these guys, or assembling just little light fixtures that get shipped out to some grow houses around the country.
Okay. Kind of neat. What kind of waste do you generate?
Hopefully, nothing. The all scrap metal will be returned, whatever we... So, there's four pieces of major equipment in there. There's a cutter, a bender, there's actually a laser cutter, too. So, whatever scrap metal is produced, we take it and sell it back. So, really, there is no waste that I can see. You know, you'll have some garbage, like boxes, cardboard boxes, when material come in, you'll unbox, and there will be cardboard, but we'll obviously recycle that in an appropriate thing. But there's really no waste.
And any future projects will pretty much incorporate the same machinery and as benign as this?
Yeah, the growth... There's not much growth intended. We're going to hire about four people, light manufacturing assemblers, and over the next two years, we only really expect to expand it up to about six people, and really, that's about it. It's pretty simple stuff.
Okay, thank you very much.
Al?
So, first, I'd just like to make the statement that I think it's a good reuse of the facility, and it's good to see the onshoring of manufacturing. And if anybody sees some of the supply chain nightmares right now.
I've been living it for 20 years, but this last year's horrible.
That all makes sense, and you answered my one question was around the number of employees, and what's your intended hours of operation?
Standard nine to five, one shift only. It might go a little later, the front office, being because it's a retail center, so that might stay open until eight or so, just to keep that, to match any kind of the retail hours. But in terms of the light manufacturing, strictly a nine to five, one shift, five days a week, not even a...
Now, what type of, like, inbound logistics, tractor trailers?
There will be a need for a tractor trailer. One of the main reasons why I purchased that facility was because it does have one bay, and it allows a tractor trailer around in there. So, both Hadlock Paints, which is next door, and Bailey's, where they have the ability to get a tractor trailer in and out of there. It is close to the interstate, which was a key factor as well. Not aggressive amounts of incoming and outgoing stuff. Basically, the concept is we want to build about 4,000 of these a month. That's about what we sell. That's one tractor trailer a month. So, you'd be getting one tractor trailer in with stuff and one tractor trailer out with stuff. So, not a lot of movement. Otherwise, it wouldn't be conducive because there's only one bay door, not really a large loading dock, but it is sufficient for what we need.
Okay, I'm all set. Okay, thanks, Al. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public interested in commenting on this application? You can step up if you like, but I assume that means a no, Deb. Hearing none, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second.
Seconds in favor?
Aye.
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 Three, zero. So, with that, I don't have any other comments. I agree with Al's remarks. It looks like an excellent reuse of the property. So, we do have a resolution for this application this evening, so now I have to find it. So, whereas the Planning Board made the following findings of fact, a site plan application and special use permit were received on September 21st, 2021 by Secretary of the Planning Board for a site plan entitled 7275 State Route 96. It is the intent of the applicant to request a change of use from a furniture business to a manufacturing business. Three, a public hearing was duly called for and was published in the Daily Messenger, and whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the application were notified by U.S. Mail. An under review sign was posted on the subject parcel as required by the town code. I neglected to ask Wes if there was any comments that he had.
No, Labella doesn't have any comments.
Okay, thanks. So, with that, there's a number of other wherestas here, which I won't labor to read. Whereas Town and Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on October 13th, 2021, identified no significant impacts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the project 7275 State Route 96 will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared. Now, therefore, be resolved that the application of David Nattirelli Site Plan and Special Use Permit entitled 7275 State Route 96 received by the Planning Board September 21st, 2021, Planning Board Site Application 36 SP 2021, and Special Use Application 8 SU 2021 be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the plans, that no final signatures will be given in plans without all legal and engineering fees have been paid per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25th, 1996, and ongoing conditions that the site plan comply with Town and Victor design and construction standards for land development, including Section 4. Two, that tenant move in permit will be obtained prior to renovation, and be further resolved that Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So, that's the resolution. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Joe moves?
I'll second.
All in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Approve three, zero. You're all set. See the ladies at the planning office. Me, too, and you're good to go.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if we can do that.
You can ask Sue. This applicant is requesting approval to convert the existing fire access on to Route 96 to a right-in, right-out curb cut with installing seven adaptive control traffic signal systems along Route 96 corridor between Route 251 and the throughway. 250 or 251?
250.
250. And it's written as 251 here. I assumed that wasn't the case. So, that's the application. Name and good evening, representative.
Matthew Oats with Benderson Development. We are requesting approval for a right-in, right-out to be installed at Victor Square. It is in the location of the existing fire access crash gate. That is out there. It is being proposed with a portchop design, so there'll be a raised center median to channel cars coming in for the right, leaving as well to avoid any left-hand turns. As part of this application, we have met with the state DOT as well, also with the town, and as part of... Do you want to go to the, just the last slide at this point? We will be installing or paying for the DOT to install seven adaptive traffic control signal systems running from 250 through the throughway, so covering seven different intersections. It's a new technology. It actually allows the traffic signal systems to basically talk to each other. So, as traffic is moving through one, the next signal will actually know that there is traffic coming, it'll keep that green, it'll overall improve the traffic flow on 96. The other thing is, if there's heavy traffic volume on a side street and there's no cars actually coming on 96, the signal will be able to change, let the cars come, and overall, it's kind of how the DOT is with technology slowly transitioning to the signal systems to try to just overall improve traffic flow without actually having to rip apart intersections, widen them out through turn lanes. So, it's just a way to use technology to help overall improve everything, and that was what we agreed to as part of the DOT's request for mitigation for this. We think it will be a substantial improvement for the plaza. As everyone's aware, this plaza really has kind of sat vacant for a fairly long period of time. The end of it is on the inside. Past Bassett Men's Warehouse has been vacant for a long time, and by adding in just even simply a right-in, right-out, that is, access is always a very, very big item that prospective tenants ask for about access to it. So, we think that is really going to help with the leasing and to really get the rest of this building actually leased out and no longer be vacant. The other thing it will also do, we believe, is help just the overall traffic at Victor Crossings, because right now, the only way to come in is to come in the Victor Crossings entrance, and then you have to make a left across the outbound traffic to get in. There is no other way to actually get in that plaza. So, it just will make things, we think, a lot better, access there overall better. Also, for anyone leaving, then say, heading westbound towards the mall, they won't have to come back through, go back through this traffic signal as well, so it'll also help alleviate a little bit of the overall traffic volume at that traffic signal. So, overall, we're excited for it. We think it'll be a real improvement for that plaza. We did receive the comment letters from Wes, and then also from your traffic consultant. There was no, I believe, any issues or comments from the traffic consultant. They were in agreement with this. There was a couple minor plan comments from Wes, didn't have any issues with those. The one question I had from Wes's comments was in regards to the sidewalk. I know the trail comes in, and then it actually heads back, runs back behind the plaza, and then continues here. So, I wasn't really sure with the sidewalk extension, what we would necessarily be extending to, just because there's no other sidewalks in that area, so I just wasn't sure about that comment, what we were, you were looking to have us try to extend to.
So, I just wanted to bring up a conversation point for the Planning Board and for you, right, as the applicant, to address if it was, if it's warranted. So, I'm going to maybe see if I can bring up the Google Earth here.
Can you all hear Wes?
Yeah, okay. I'm not exactly sure where the trail is, and I just wanted to... I didn't want to... I know where the sidewalk ends now, right, and it kind of empties out onto...
You're not displaying if you're...
No. My display is not up. It's okay, maybe.
There you go. Try that again. Screen came up and you're going, ding.
Oh, I'm still plugged in. There we are. We're good. So, and maybe it's fine the way it is and the way you have it proposed. I just wanted to have a brief discussion. So, as you can see here in the aerial photograph, there's a sidewalk that's currently in place up to about this point. Yeah, there is... My understanding is that this, I think it's the Seneca Trail?
Yes.
That comes in, I don't know, must come through here, and I know there's something that loops around over here to the pump station, the sewer pump station off of High Street. Does it make sense to... And some of this sidewalk is going to be removed to allow for installation of your right-in, right-out. Does it make sense to extend it any further to connect to wherever that trail is? I'm not exactly sure where the trail is.
So, the trail, if you want to zoom out a little bit more, so the trail itself actually comes up through, kind of like through here, and then runs behind.
Okay.
So, it's kind of here and then down. So, if you're coming west or eastbound on 96 at that point, if you're looking to the left, you'll actually see the trail. It's literally like the warrant path coming right back up the hill, once you're kind of coming from down here on the gully. So, it's kind of around here. You can almost see it kind of there, and then it extends here, and then it runs all the way. That would then be northbound, north behind Victor, or west behind Victor Crossing, so it kind of continues then there. So, it's sort of like here and then there. We kind of have to take the sidewalk, run it down, kind of drop it down the hill. I'm not really sure if there's a good area to really do the sidewalk, and then there's no other sidewalk even to connect. There is a spot here where the trail kind of runs over and does tie in then to the sidewalk that runs through Victor Crossing. So, if you're on the trail, you do have the ability here to then at least get to the internal sidewalk system that we have there as well.
Okay. Yeah.
That was really... Because I kind of went out there after you said that and like kind of took a look, just kind of trying to see.
Oh, thanks for doing that.
See where it is and try to get an idea. Like, I had walked back here before looking at our stormwater, so I felt like it was a little bit farther away, and then just wasn't really sure that there was really a good way to build it, because it starts to get hilly and whatnot.
Yeah, really, the other comments that Labella had were generally technical in nature, very, very simple to, for the applicant to address, like, for example, the standard duty pavement. There was a couple of call-outs on the plan, one for heavy duty pavement, one for standard duty pavement, and just want to make sure that's in order. And then, yeah, that's pretty much it. It looks like the access man, it looks like this project would satisfy or would be in compliance with the Town's Access Management Law, Chapter 55. So, there's no problem there, and then certainly, we would defer to also the Town's Traffic Consultant, CPL, on any of those traffic-related matters. So, things look good to us.
Anything other questions you had?
I don't... Nope, I'm all.
Okay.
That's good. Any questions the board has?
Public hearing. So, I will open it up to the public shortly. Al, any comments or questions?
No questions.
Okay. Joe?
No questions.
I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to recall with this project, the reason why the fire entrance...
There was...
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? I'm trying to recall the original approval on the project with respect to Commerce Park and the crash gate and all that. Is that... Was that part of the approval, and does the original approval affect what you're asking for tonight?
The... No, so I believe the crash gate, I wasn't specifically the one who got it approved, but there was concern that if there was actually an accident in this area here, it would act, and then there was a fire here or a medical emergency, it would hinder the response time for anyone coming into Victor Square. So, the crash gate was put in specifically for that. So, then, based on that, now we're taking the crash gate, and now we're converting it to an access point, so it wouldn't hinder any...
Right. That agrees with my understanding, and I guess my question is, was the original approval restricting the project to just one form of access on Route 96 for particular purposes of satisfying all the traffic needs for the plaza? My memory fails me. It's been 20-plus years, I think now, but I'm just curious to know if that, if there was an approval that restricted this from happening.
Well, there was an approval for a site plan for Victor Square, and that approval had the access here, but site plans and approvals get modified all the time. There was nothing specifically that then restricted that access to just a specific single access point besides the Town's site plan approval at the time. And based on now, 20 years later, seeing how the plaza's progressed and what's going on, we're coming back requesting a modification because to try to make that plaza more viable and get those tenants bases leased out, seeing this right-in, right-out is what. And it wasn't something, we built it, spent six months, and was like we need it. It's been almost 20 years, and that's been a fairly substantial vacancy.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay. And then, just a comment I had regarding the sidewalk is that it appears to be wholly within the right-of-way. So, if what you say is correct with respect to extending the sidewalk, it's conceivable that the DOT, under a reconstruct project, might take more sidewalk on if they wanted to extend it. That's all I have for now.
Okay, thanks, Scott. I'll open the floor to the public for comment. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the applicant?
Good evening. David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street, also with Victor Hiking Trails, and I just wanted to verify what the applicant said as far as the location of the Seneca Trail in back of the plaza, and then down a little hill towards 96, and then it cuts down near the Longhorn Restaurant through that old creek. It used to be an old road there, and so that is not going to affect the trails at all. I did want to ask a question about, I'm sure that the appropriate engineers have looked at line of sight for that in and out, and looked at access for a fire truck to get in in there easily. So, I trust that all that has been looked at. As far as the trail going straight across to the, where the traffic light is, that was put in primarily for the residents that would be at the hotel across the street. So, if they want to, if they're staying there for a few days and they want to go out for a walk, they can access the trail from that point. I don't know if extending the sidewalk would be a benefit to the people that are staying at that residence, if they want to... I guess it would depend on what kind of stores in there. If it's a candy store, they might want to go over there, or a restaurant, they might want to walk over and walk on the sidewalk rather than walking through the parking lot. So, that's my comments.
Thank you, David. Wes, any comment on the radius and the entrance?
Yeah, so they did provide a, they provided a turning template as part of their site plan, and that seems to be all well in order.
Okay.
We did review that, and also, I would imagine, I would imagine that maybe DOT would probably take a review as part of their look at this project as well.
Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm David Anderson. I live at 359 Metalark Lane in Victor. My property borders his property. I have some concerns, I guess. Number one, the big question is, why? I mean, why would somebody want to spend all this money when, in essence, it's not really going to greatly increase flow of traffic in and out of the plaza? That comes right from the State Department of Transportation dated January 28, 2019. The proposal includes construction of a new right-in, right-out entrance at the location of an existing gate, fire entrance. The entrance would be approximately 580 feet from the signalized entrance. We see no supporting documentation as to why this additional entrance is necessary. It would not likely improve levels of service and would conflict with best access management practices and principles. For these reasons, we do not think it's in the best interest of the traveling public to permit the additional entrance. So, this was part of one SP 19, and at that time, there was an application that came in, but it didn't come in front of the board. So, once again, I got to wonder, what's the plans for the plaza? What's the long-term plan? Because they obviously want something more than just this, okay? Change of use of the property is going to require board approval. And so, with that said, if they're pumping all this... And so with that said, if they're pumping all this money in, I think they got a bigger plan. And I think we ought to begin with the end of mind and before we approve something like this, we need to know what the applicant really wants to do with the property, okay? Referring back to this 1SP19, that plan had the same right-in, right-out turning lane, okay? And it also called for additional parking behind the plaza, which would cut into the 100-foot residential buffer, which we're strictly opposed to. And by putting this right-in, right-out turning lane, it's going to take away, I believe, seven parking spots, which is in the county comments. So we're already deficient in parking and we're going to increase the deficiency. Just doesn't make sense to me. So why would we approve something that's going to cause another problem? And I know what's going to happen. They're going to be back here asking for change of use permit, variances, additional parking, that there's nowhere to put parking without invading the 100-foot buffer. Once again, the neighboring residents are strictly opposed to that. I also want to record to say that the, this property, I worked very closely with the planning board back in, through 1995 and 98. Originally, the property was bought by Ray Ruby from Harry's Trailer Park, I think was what it was originally when we built our house. The property then was bought by Robert Filon. Okay, Robert Filon is the one that actually got the property developed. There was many different versions of this plan. I went to meetings for four years before this got approved. We came up with a plan that was equitable for the neighbors and now it looks like there's going to be changes and I've got every right to be concerned. It's certainly going to improve the value of their property and their ability to rent it out, but what's that going to do to the value of my property? What's that going to do to my quality of life, you know? I mean, right now they got a vacuum truck that goes through there at 10, 11 o'clock at night and I can hardly hear my TV in my family room with that thing going. So let's move cautiously, I guess. Let's, let's look at the whole plan and not just approve a little tiny piece that's going to lead to something bigger. So that's all I have to say at this time.
I did hear the applicant earlier state that the logic was that it would add, improve access to cars in and out of that particular plaza.
Okay.
That was his motivation and not putting cars back onto the entrance at Commerce Park. And also it is, it improves emergency access and it basically makes it permanent that you can get in and out without having to move a gate, you know, emergency-wise. I didn't hear a request yet for change of use. He has stated that the building has been vacant or portionally, part of it's been vacant and they're trying to attract, as you might expect, other tenants. So right now they haven't asked for a change of use, but they want to make the building more attractive for new tenants.
Okay, so how are you going to make up for the lack of parking spaces? Because you're going to lose parking spaces by putting that in there.
It depends on the use that's being proposed. If the use requires all those, because there's many different types of uses that demand more or less per square foot, you know, a furniture store doesn't require nearly as much square footage.
Right, no, I understand that's why the project got approved when it did. Okay.
Sure. So whatever comes before us for that, you'd have to look and see what, how much parking is required for that. But honestly, the mitigating feature of this application is something that is going to vastly improve traffic flow through the whole corridor. And that's the electronic tie-in with Monroe County's RTAC control, traffic control system where vehicles will move much more efficiently through.
Do they have an outside party purchase that? I mean, if, if the town requires that, it's state Route 96, why can't the state pay for that?
It's paying for the state and if you'd rather pay for it with your taxes, I suppose.
I would.
Well, I would rather receive the benefit from a developer.
There's going to be another price to pay, so that's my concern.
I don't know.
All right. Well, and once again, the DOT said, the DOT said right here that they didn't feel that it would make a difference, so.
And I understand that it wouldn't make a difference on 96, but it will make a difference within the development, as he has stated. So it makes sense to me with the other improvements in the corridor that this application, you know, can be justified. We're not voting on it yet, but we have a resolution to talk about it, so.
Okay. All I've said in my piece, I'm sure I have other, I have other neighbors that probably have.
And I'm sure he may have other things to say in response to your comments as well.
Okay.
Relating how I've heard what he's saying.
I mean, you know, if they have no intentions of making any further changes, then so be it, let it be in the record. If not, you know.
I don't know. We never know what's going to, I mean, look at Hadlocks, you know, right next door, they just asked for, you know, light manufacturing. I don't know what's going to come here. This is fall retail right now, it'd be kind of odd to see a manufacturing use on that site.
I mean, I believe Anderson purchased this property because that's the only way they could gain access to the Walmart Plaza.
Yeah.
So they didn't really want to own the property. They just, they were kind of forced into it, so.
I'd rather have some parcel be viable in the town, honestly.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I'm just concerned what might go in there, so, you know, if it's.
If there's a change of use, then we'll hear about it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tammy Van Buren here on 365 Metalark Lane, right next to Dave. While this property doesn't back up directly to my property, it does have an effect on the amount of traffic that we hear. There will be more cars going in and out of there supposedly, which will then increase traffic that we hear through our windows, okay? Our windows are shut. We can still hear all of this traffic. The other thing is, we know from experience that write-ins, write-outs do not work. Every single day, I see cars turning left out of the New York Beer Project area. I work in that plaza. It doesn't work. It doesn't stop people from turning left. There's no median in Route 96 here. So there's no median for them to, to stop them from making a left-hand turn. I know that the thought is, oh, well, we're not going to, we're going to put in something so that that won't happen. They did that at Beer Project. It didn't work. I am adamant that these things do not work like we, like everybody expects them to. Human nature is just that they're going to take the easy way out. People are going to turn left out of there and are going to have accidents. I also have the same thing that Dave had, the same document from the engineer that states there seems to be no reason for it. I understand that they're saying, well, it gives better access, it gives other people a way to leave. Again, it gives more people a way to leave, more traffic, more sound to us, more impact to our quality of life. I also agree with Dave that there's an ulterior motive. If we get this, then we'll get something else. We, we've seen this happen over and over again with the town. We need to see the big picture, not just little bits and pieces, because you have to understand, there's residential property right behind this. They knew it when they bought the property, that that was there. So they knew they were going to have to abide by whatever was there. The town took very great effort to try to protect our properties when this development was put in place. Don't ruin it now. It's, that's all I can say is that. And they don't work and are you going to put slip lanes in then so that people can turn right? What type of other things are you going to do so that people can turn in and turn out?
They haven't proposed them, so.
So those again, I don't understand what has changed from 2019 to right now in 2021. If anything, more retail has gone out of business than has stayed in business in the past two years. So are we putting in something that's not going to be necessary or is it perhaps in the back of their mind that they want to put another restaurant in there? Who knows? Again, I really, I am adamant that I do not agree with this.
Hi, I'm Heather Zola. I live at 311 Metalark Lane and I would just like to concur with what Dave and Tammy said. I, I think I'd like to ask the applicant what their future plans are for the property because as Dave said in their original application, it had the right-in, right-out plus the expanded parking. And if they're needing expanded parking, and it's probably for something that would require, as you said, like a restaurant, and that's something I think we have to be concerned about, that the town zoning code requires that 100-foot buffer between commercial and residential. And so we don't want to lose that. The property already got a variance when it was developed to have a reduced setback for 96. So I think one big variance like that is enough. So if we can get the developer to let us know what the plans are as far as the next step, you know, the right-in, right-out, they're looking for additional tenants. I would also like to point out that when the Goodwill store was there, that parking lot was packed every single day and night. And I never heard any complaints about people having trouble getting in and out using the Victor Commerce Park entrance. And as far as going cross lane to get in there, he mentioned that, if you recall, when Commerce Park was in the approval process, one of the mitigations that they told us would happen for, for the one entrance for this gigantic plaza was that there'd be courtesy gaps to allow patrons to get in and out of this particular plaza. And that always got a chuckle from the audience because, you know, you're just expecting people to be kind and let other people in, but. So I think that we need to ask the applicant what the ultimate plans are for the property and we need to be on record that that 100-foot buffer will not be disturbed because as Dave pointed out, the hiking trail is right behind there and you'd lose the hiking trail if they go into that buffer. So that's all I have to say right now, but I think you guys should really question the applicant about what the, the future plans are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone want to address those comments?
So I'll start with, I guess, the why. The why is we have a half vacant building that we basically can't lease at this point. So rather than have a vacant building sitting there, we are looking to make an improvement that would make the building more attractive so we can bring new tenants to the town of Victor and no longer have a vacant building. In regards to the long-term plan, this is the only site plan application that is with the town. At this point, we are not asking as part of this application to go into the buffer or anything like that at all. There was an application in 2019, the DOT did issue that letter. The DOT typically just doesn't like driveways in general anywhere. They had their choice. You'll have one driveway for two miles and just let people figure it out. What we worked out with the DOT is, well, if you would like to do the driveway, what can we get? And we have agreed to the adaptive signal control. It's not like a small, little, oh, here's a couple thousand dollars, go do something. Like we are putting an investment well over six figures into this corridor, so it's not like a small amount. So we are committed to improving the traffic in this area and that's what the DOT and also the town gets as part of this, which is always the offset that the DOT looks at. We looked at other things with this as well, like were there other items the DOT would want? Would you prefer to have a raised median, which could possibly also help the Panera Bed driveway on the other side? What the DOT said is no, we want to look at overall putting in this traffic control system because this is what they actually want to start converting everything to over the next five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. And to your point, every time the DOT can say, hey, developer, go pay for that and not your tax dollars, they take every opportunity that they get to do that and they usually get what they, what they want. In regards to parking, I've gone out there on Thursday evenings, Friday evenings, I've gone out there at 11:00 AM on a Saturday. I have still yet to see 20 cars in that parking lot at any point when the Spirit Halloween wasn't open. So with Men's Warehouse and Bassett, there's still almost no customers that come into the plaza, which also makes it even more difficult to lease because the plaza itself just looks dead.
So do you have a thought on what, a type of tenant you could attract with this improvement?
The thoughts would be it would still fall within the retail use. I mean, we'd market to retail, we'll market it to restaurant, we'll market it to whoever. We're not going to tell a tenant, no, we're not going to try to bring you into the town of Victor. But as the board knows, anytime, we generally, we have to come back to the board and present that project. If the town doesn't like it, it's not something that's going to happen. So it's not like we can do this right-in, right-out and then we have a free-for-all for whatever else we can do. Everything has to come back and be looked at.
So one of the comments that I heard also was, now we're removing multiple spaces to put this right-in, right-out.
Yes.
Correct. So if you're looking to attract tenants, you realize you're going to be restricted to the space that's available for parking now.
Correct, yeah.
I don't believe there's any banked parking spaces and you certainly can't invade the buffer that.
Correct, yeah, we wouldn't be, yeah, we would not look to invade, invade the 100-foot buffer to the residential is all. So like right, right now, our focus is this access. With our opinion is without this access, there is no long-term plan for this plaza because it's really not a viable plaza and we'll have a very difficult time getting it leased out. So really to, to try to bring life back to this plaza, the first step in this process is this right-in, right-out. And it is so important to us that we are investing a substantial amount of money well beyond the cost of construction of just the right-in, right-out.
The other major, I'll put this, objection to some of the features of the Commerce Park development was the proximity of restaurants to the neighborhood. And it looks to me like if you put a restaurant here, you'd be much closer than any of the other restaurant pads that you have available on the balance of that property. So with the, the smells from, you know, vents and things like that from restaurants, I can imagine that a restaurant would not go over too well at that site.
Yeah.
Probably wouldn't go over at all from the resident's perspective. So I guess I would give you some caution regarding the type of tenant that you're trying to attract. So are there any other public comments? If you'd like to make another comment, that's fine. Come on up again and address the board. Just name again and let us know who's speaking.
Tammy Van Buren, 365 Metalark Lane. In looking at this plan, I see the right-in and right-out and it looks like there's parking spots right next to it, which to me is a hazard because you have someone pulling in and you possibly have someone backing up to pull out. Are they going to remove even more parking spots to prevent that? Because again, I work over in this plaza with Beer Project. Making a turn in that parking lot, you're taking your life in your hands. You can't see what's coming from either direction because of the way the parking lot is set up. They have to make sure that this doesn't happen here. So which means to me, looking at this plan, that you would need to remove even more parking spots so that you're not blocking the view of people. Just something to think about. And the other thing, and I don't quite know how to say this and have it come out properly, but I'm going to say it anyway. To me, this sounds like a quid pro quo. You give us this, we'll give you that. And is that how the town really wants to be known to do business? I understand that it's a benefit to the area. I get that. I understand that they want to help, but are they not going to do it if they don't get the right-in and right-out? Because if not, then they don't really want to help the traffic pattern. They just want the right-in and right-out.
David Anderson, 359 Metalark Lane.
Dave Henderson, 359, Metal Arc Lane, Victor. Is there somebody from Codes here tonight?
Codes.
Oh, it's Nouns.
Oh, okay. I do have a concern, because the residential buffer, the applicant's supposed to perpetually maintain the buffer, and there's numerous dead trees that have not been replaced. So, and I told Marty about this two years ago. Can I give this to somebody, would somebody like take some action on that? Kim?
I'm sorry. Everybody else is...
Kim's right behind you.
It's a great name. Two, in our office, yeah.
I thought there was more.
No.
No, we need you.
I just had...
I just had a question from Kim's comments at the beginning. You said that somebody was looking for charging stations for the next meeting?
Yes.
What property was that?
It's in the Walmart Plaza property. I think it's by Kohl's, out front of Kohl's.
Oh, okay. So it wasn't this one?
No, it's not.
Okay. Just wanted to double check.
It's kind of an odd spot to have chargers. If you want to be able to walk to Kohl's, it'd be a long way to go. At least from an electric car perspective.
Yeah. I just, I wasn't sure which project she mentioned, so I just wanted to...
I was a little light, Heather, sorry.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, and you mentioned the restaurants that we are surrounded with from the other side of the property. And just so we know, the Five Guys, really smelly, and they're supposed to have a special filter on their fans, so that we can actually enjoy our backyard occasionally. And so I would appreciate that if you could also take that to Codes, Lisa, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
I would follow up with an email.
Okay. All right, great.
To get it and writing from you.
All right, thanks.
Yep. And there's one more pad still undeveloped, I believe, across from the central square on that plaza that is, was originally designated for restaurants, which was far enough away, I think, from the neighbors.
Yes, behind like the backside of GNC.
Yeah.
Building, yep.
Yeah. But that's, the whole point was, it was an area centrally located in the plaza, far enough away that would keep the restaurant vapors and things like that. And now you have Mo, or not Mo's, what's the other?
Tapolte.
Holy and Five Guys there, that are much closer, so.
Pizza place, Pie Pizza, yeah.
So, anyway, you can tell restaurants are going to be a little challenged to at least propose for that spot.
So if you could email me the trees or my James, we'll make sure, yeah, just if you want to, we'll get that taken care of, for sure, and I'll look into the Five Guys as well and see.
I was going to ask Wes to comment on the note about the turn-in, turn-out space Because is there a risk for losing more parking spaces, Wes, that because of the geometry there? Will it effectively, I don't want to say erase, but nullify the use of that, or the ability to use that, right in, right out, if you keep those spaces right next to what's being shown as being removed?
I think those, you know, they would, the way it's drawn, right, it's still a usable parking space, whether it's a safe usable parking space, or whether it's, you know, something that might be, you know, refined a little bit, where you, you know, remove one parking space on either side of the entrance and exit lane, that's possible. You know, there's also parking spaces immediately adjacent to the other egress, ingress and egress points of this parcel as well. So, you know, people just, I understand that there are concerns with the way people behave with their vehicles, in terms of, you know, maybe not being careful, you know, trying to turn left out when they come out of a right in, right out. This one in particular is somewhat different. The characteristics of the roadway are different than what's on High Street. You know, it's, planning board, we don't have any, you don't have any control over the way people behave in their vehicles. And hopefully just people take care when they're, you know, pulling out of their parking space, or looking to park in there, so.
Is that actually going to be a raised median between the in and out?
Yes. So this is put in here, and then there's also about 60 feet or so in, before you're actually into the drive lane. So it's not like you're going to come off 96, make the turn, and you're right on top of a parking space. There is room to come in, you're pulling in, decelerate, and be able to see. So it's not like you turn right in, and you're directly on top of a car, like some places are, where you make that turn, and there's a car literally like right there. So there is space, and there is a throat coming in, in this area as well. So when you come in, you still have room before you're even into the area with parking to decelerate, and then also to be able to see.
It just, the first question I had when I looked at this was, why isn't there a deceleration lane to get cars off of traffic? I know you have some shoulder space there, but is that enough? Is it adequate?
Yeah, and that was one, like, one of the things we looked at, and doing, and the way this was designed, was from, in consultation with the DOT, and having it done this way, was the way they want, and having that extra throat coming in was looked at and felt like it was enough versus putting in a whole extended right turn lane, because they also look at that in regards to the specific traffic volumes and things of that nature. When do they want to add a right turn lane? Because then they're picking up extra road, extra maintenance, extra plowing, things of that nature as well. So it's kind of for them, that's kind of how they look at it.
I think maybe, if I recall correctly, when we went to a meeting, went to a meeting with town staff, the project coordinator, the town's traffic consultant was there at the DOT office, and Henrietta Benderson was there, as well as your traffic consultant, SRF. I think they might, DOT might have also mentioned the proximity to the control, the signal-controlled intersection of Commerce Drive and 96, and that, you know, there, yes, there might be instances where people are coming along 96 and get the green, and, you know, have that green light and have a through there. But, you know, in terms of maybe the proximity, I can't remember what the distance is between that intersection and this right in, right out. But I think that was also noted as being possibly, not really a traffic calming measure, but just something of note.
Yes.
All right, I'm just looking at the distances shown on your, so you're asking, Wes, what the distance from the intersection into?
Like seven, I want to say like seven...
580.
Is that 580?
It's noted right on the site plan. I remember seeing it.
It's in the DOT.
Yep, 580, it looks like, yeah. That's right. You've got station lines on here too, so that's what I was just counting. Now, Scott, is that enough? I mean, is that something that shows up in the...
I think in our access regs, I think that actually agrees with our access regs.
Okay.
That would be, I think Wes indicated so as well. I think he looked at that too. So I think, I think for this one, versus another application we had before, it's not too long ago, I think this one does satisfy the excess regulations that we have on the books.
Other comments, questions? Joe, Scott?
I guess the comment that I have is that, in listening to the public speak, I think their points are well taken. I think they're suspicious as to what's going on after this, and rightfully so, because this project has had a history that goes way, way back. That being said, I understand exactly what you're saying as well. You have a piece of property that you want to see improved. And I guess the one thing that sticks in my mind is that this is definitely an improvement. I think it may do what you want it to do, but I think expansion of your parking area there is very limited because of the proximity of the neighbors. And so I guess it's kind of a be careful what you wish for comment.
Yep.
Saying.
Understood, and everything we have to do, if we have to buy by town code, work with the board, work with the town, and we've been doing it for years on many different projects. So we feel we have a good relationship with the town and with how...
I honestly would be reluctant to approve a restaurant here in this site. That's the biggest thing.
Understood, yep. And I'm not saying, I was, I'm not...
You mentioned restaurants as one of the other...
I understand that, I'm just saying, like, we, I'm just saying, we wouldn't tell if someone came to us and said, hey, we would like to rent this space out. We wouldn't just say, no. We would at least come to the town, talk to you, and see what the reception was. Whether it's a restaurant, whatever it was, we won't just ourselves say, no, we'll at least, whether it's formally with the board, or if it's whether talking to Kim, and then getting the reaction, things of that nature.
Okay.
That's all I was saying. That was the only...
I'm not, Dave's raising hands, so I just wanted to...
Change of views requires board approval.
Yeah, right. That's change of views, correct. Yeah. It's not like he's just going to start putting a restaurant in, and then we have to discover it when Marty goes and looks at the site. Hey, guys, there's a restaurant going in, sorry. That's not going to happen. So, Al, anything else?
Scott really hit on all the points that I had, so I'm good.
I'm going to close the public hearing after your comment, Dave. So if you have something you want to say again, a question?
I do.
You need to come up here. Nope, you have to come right up here. Lisa will hit me on the shoulder if you don't.
So going back to Valentine Plaza, there's confusion. When anybody is unfamiliar with the area, and they hit one of these right in, right out things, you tend to want to leave the way you came in, right? And if you want to go south, because that's the way you came from, well, there's a problem. So there needs to be something, if you were to approve this, which I hope you don't, but there needs to be something to direct people how to get the hell out of there if they want to go south on 96. Now, they put signs up inside of Valentine Plaza, they don't do any good, but once again...
Well, honestly, this...
They're going to be confused, right?
I don't know. If I'm going the other way, I want to go to a light that helps me get out and take a left across four lanes of highway to get there.
Yeah. Let's hope people have a common sense of...
If I'm on Valentine Road, or High Street to get out, it's easier to go across a curb and go one lane than it is, you know, at least three lanes here, including a median that's four.
True. But if they came in that way, how do they know, how do they know that they have to go all the way around the other side of the plaza to get out? Just a point.
I understand. And Panera's is the same way.
Okay.
You've got a left in, or right in, right out at Panera's, right across the street.
Right.
To McDonald's. So, but it's at a control, I'll go to a control every time if I want to get out of a plaza, because it's the only way to be sure with all that traffic on 96 to get going where I want to go. So...
So that is a good point, though. Does the applicant intend to put signage, the right turn only is an exit, as part of the proposal?
Yes. We'll have right turn only, no left turn signs, and then we'll also add a sign, like, south 96, signal throughway 490, like a sign like that. We'll add that as well there, that people can see.
Like an informational directional sign.
Yes, a directional sign there, putting them to the other way. We'll add that as well, no problem.
If we were to vote on, approve this this evening, I'd want to make sure we had that in there somewhere in a resolution. I don't think it's on the plans necessarily. Maybe you know, or don't.
I wanted to say that there was...
I mean, there's pavement markings in here, but I don't see much in the way of signage. And points are well taken, it's good to have directional informative signage that tells people, don't turn left, in addition to the fact you have a curb there. I assume the DOT is...
We haven't gotten the highway work permits with the DOT still, to do their technical review of the plans. I mean, we'll agree to the no right, right turn only.
Signage as reviewed and approved by the town engineer.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that works fine with us as well.
Put your hand up.
One of the things is...
You need to be at the microphone. You need to be at the microphone. Because there's no way I'm going to hear you from over there.
No, I can talk, believe me.
Well, now you can.
Okay, again, Tammy Van Buren, 365, Metal Arc Lane. It has to be, if you're going to approve this at all, which, again, I am dead set against, and it looks like it's going to happen no matter what, which then I have to ask, why bother with the public hearing? But anyways, it has to be a no left turn. Valentine Plaza says right turn only, does no good. Maybe if there were a no left turn sign there, there may be a little less of it. So, again, it can't be right turn only.
Okay, we appreciate the comment. Thank you. All right. Unless there's other objections on the town, on the planning board, to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
No moves?
I'll second.
Scott seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Closed, zero, so four, nothing. All right, with that, any other comments from the board, or from Wes?
I think the no left turn that was mentioned, I think that's a good condition to put in there, in addition to the town engineer reviewing the signage, in my opinion.
Any comments?
No.
Al? Any comments? Anything else?
No further comments.
Wes?
So I've got a draft condition here, you know, based on what I've heard in the past few minutes. And it indicates that adequate directional signage be depicted on the site plan, including a no left turn sign, to the satisfaction of the town engineer.
Okay. Can you read that once more, please?
That adequate directional signage be depicted on the site plan, including a no left turn sign, to the satisfaction of the town engineer.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's not just the sign, the no left turn sign, but you said directional, including, so I'm assuming that's more than just...
We could say, including but not limited to.
That's kind of where I was going.
And that would be a condition that would have to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan.
And if Lisa has any questions, she can talk to you about verbiage, but I'm sure you're giving her notes. Okay? So I think that we have a draft resolution here that addresses this application. We've heard your comments, and we've tried to, I have tried to look at it from your perspective as well. I also want to look at it from the town's benefit perspective, and in our future reviews of whatever might come for approval on that lot, we certainly hear what you have to say in terms of restaurants and traffic in and out of there, parking, and lighting, all of that will be considered every time an applicant comes in, but especially in this area. I mean, they're right next door to you guys. I feel for you. I appreciate that.
In the board, you're right.
That will be in the meeting minutes, that you said that, correct?
Tony? You have to come up, I can't hear. Really, when I do the minutes, I can't hear it.
I just want to make sure that what you just said is in the meeting minutes.
She does a trans...
Okay, is in the meeting minutes, so that when it comes time for them to come back and say, we want a restaurant, we want this, we can go back and say, look, this is what we were promised.
Oh, we're not promising, we're looking at...
This is what we will do, okay?
We will do for all of those points, and certainly you'll have another opportunity and voice those opinions again. And the board, whoever's on the board at that time, whether it's all of us or none of us, will look at the past meeting minutes to see what was reviewed at the time that they came before the board.
Okay.
For this application, which is now.
Like I said, I'm just, I have been, and Scott knows this as well, I have been with this project since I moved in in 1992, just about. And I've seen it gone from it's going to be an enclosed water park, to it's going to be this, it's going to be that.
Frontier Fields.
And all, yeah. And all I can say is really, buyer beware. You bought this property knowing, knowing what you were buying. I'm sorry it didn't work out. I'm sorry you're not getting what you want, but you bought it, just like we bought ours, knowing that we had commercial behind us. Well, at the time, it wasn't really commercial. But we also did that, but we trust the town to take care of us. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you. We do have a closed public hearing, and we do have a resolution on this. So if you're all okay with me reading it, I will move forward with it. All our comments are complete, so...
Should something be put in there about the deletion of the parking spaces?
It's been in the meeting minutes. Anything you said...
I'm saying, if you decide to approve it, that the applicant accepts the fact... I'm saying if you decide to approve it, that the applicant accepts the fact he's losing seven parking spots.
I'm not gonna be able to get that, just so you know. I can't, I can't hear.
It's all right. It's in the meeting minutes. He's already mentioned, you've already mentioned it before, that the parking spaces are going to be lost. You've made comments about your concern for the parking spaces immediately adjacent to the ones that are lost as part of this in-out movement. There's a lot on here.
No, I wondered if it needed to be part of the resolution.
Yeah, this conversation isn't getting on the record. So, on New York State, onto New York State Route 96 to a right, right out curb, should be right in, right out curb, cut along with installing seven adaptive control traffic signal systems along the Route 96 corridor between Route 250 and the throughway. Number three, a public hearing was duly called and for and was published in Daily Messenger, and whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the application were notified by U.S. Mail. An under review sign was posted on the subject parcel, as required by Town Code. Number four, the planning board held a public hearing on October 13, 2021, at which time the public was permitted to speak on their application. Number five, the action is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations, and the applicant provided Part One of the short environmental assessment form. Number six, the application was referred to the Ontario County Planning Board under Section 239 of the general municipal law. Number seven, on September 8, 2021, Ontario County Planning Board referred the application back to the referring agency as a Class One with comments. Number eight, there was a coordinated fire service site plan review on August 25, 2021, with no comments at this time. Number nine, Department of Transportation reviewed the site plan on August 9, 2021, and provided comments. Number 10, Traffic Consultant reviewed the site plan in a letter dated August 16, 2021, and provided comments. Number 11, Lobella Associates reviewed the site plan in a letter October 11, 2021, in a letter dated October 11, 2021, and provided comments. Number 12, the Town of Victor Code Enforcement Officer reviewed the site plan in a letter dated August 28, 2021, and provided comments. So, whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on October 13, 2021, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project, Victor Square Parking Entrance Improvements, will not have a significant impact on the environment, and let a negative declaration be prepared. Now therefore be it resolved that the application of Henderson Development Company, LLC, be approved with the following conditions. Condition number one, to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan, that no final signatures will be given on the plans until all legal and engineering fees have been paid, as per fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. Number two, that the comments in a letter dated August 16, 2021, from the Traffic Consultant be addressed. Number three, that the comments in a letter dated October 11, 2021, from Lobella Associates be addressed. And number four, and then I'll let Wes read what he has.
That adequate directional signage be depicted on the site plan, including but not limited to a no left turn sign, to the satisfaction of the town engineer.
Thank you. I go on conditions. Number one, that the site plan comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards for Land Development, including Section Four. Number two, that a New York State DOT Highway Work Permit be obtained for both driveway entrance and the adaptive signal system, per their comments dated August 9, 2021. And may it further resolve that the Planning Board's Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. I hear a motion for this resolution as amended. I'll move. Al moves? I need a second.
I'll second it.
Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
Opposed.
Opposed. Approved through one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He second. Yes, Highland Park. Sorry, Jeff. Applicant's requesting approval to construct 120 apartment style and 26 townhome style for rent residential units with supporting house entities and parking. This is not the first time we've heard this. The public hearing is still open.
You got it.
For our ears.
Thanks. I will be brief after that last application, and will hopefully be able to address some of the questions. And then, obviously, we have some people here from the public to comment. So, I'm gonna just, for the record, my name's Jeff Morrell with Morrell Builders. It's good to see everyone this evening. Just for this evening, we were able to actually present tonight the specific building footprint. I think that was one of the main discussion points last time, as well as cross-sections. So, we're bringing that data this evening to share with the board. So, I'm gonna just briefly open it up to the first slide and just highlight a couple of things with regards to the overall site plan. Because we now have a footprint of the building, we were able to map those onto the site, and actually, the footprint of the actual building is actually a little bit smaller than originally proposed. So, we were able to gain significant amount of space, especially in Building Number One. And we were also able to look at our parking and our parking ratio, and really pull back parking along the wings to provide this in much more of a land bank scenario. We don't need this parking, so we'll put it in a land banked calculation for the town, so you can kind of notice here, here, and a little bit here, and a little bit here. But, as you mentioned prior, we're reducing from light industrial to a residential, so we had a great reduction in impervious surface area. But if we can reduce impervious surface area even further, we're going to attempt to do that.
Jeff, I'm gonna interrupt you. I just had a question about, you talked about land banking. In each corner of the building, there's, shows land banking, right where it looks like there should be like stairwells or apartments or something like that. Is that by own purpose?
So, this is, you're saying like here and here?
No, if you look at the actual building, right there, where your dot was?
Correct.
At the bottom, to the right, there you go. There's like four of them on the right side. There you go.
Like that, you're saying, or here?
Right.
Oh, those are inside the building.
So, you actually have parking spaces?
Inside, subordinated inside the building. Correct.
They are going to be live parking spaces. They're not land banked.
Correct. It's a live parking space. We have customers oftentimes that are handicap accessible, so they like to be able to drive into the building. And so, each one of the buildings, correct, if you can see a little bit of a dotted line, we create an apron along the side and allow them to access directly into the building, so that they could access their apartment.
Looks like you have 16 live parking spaces underneath an overhang or something.
Correct. And what we did is, beyond that parking field, we allowed it to just revert back to green. And so, we didn't need to create that turning radius to go into the building internally. So, you're absolutely correct. We have, as I said, a great parking ratio right now. We really like the centralized parking. It subordinates it into the internal of the site, and we wanted to create large parking medians in between, so that we could green up all of those with large plantings to basically break up the entire parking field. So, all told, now we have an actual footprint of the building placed on the site. And you can kind of briefly move to the second slide, because we took that building footprint, and we did the exact cross-section of the site from basically where Deborah Hogan's home was at the closest point, coming straight across the strike, site, right to left, showing every one of the elevations. For the board and the public's information, there was a question on building height. The building height, as it's measured by building code, is actually 40 feet point two. Normal standard two-story is a 35-foot building height requirement. This actually is a 40-foot point two in total building height of requirement. So, even though it is a quote-unquote three-story building, we reduced that roof pitch to basically a five and a half 12. We did want to have a gabled roof on it as a project, because it's much more residential in nature. But it really keeps that roof pitch down and keeps us nearly within a traditional two-story footprint. You can see here, as I mentioned, there's 109-foot differential from property line to actually the first townhome building here, and we'll have a little over 80 feet of undisturbed woods on a right-to-left basis. And I'll show a little bit more of that detail in a minute. The second is, when we did this elevation, we took the highest point along, excuse me, the lowest point along of our streetscape to set the homes, so that we showed the cross-section at the worst position possible, from an exaggeration between that building and the three-story building. So, this is sitting at 610 feet, but in actual fact, the street rises all the way up to 616 feet, but we thought it was better to demonstrate what the greatest exacerbation would be between the buildings for the board's comfort. But as I said, the rest of the street rises up to that 616 level. So, that's the cross-section, right to left. There is no visibility of this site from Main Street Fishers Inn. As I mentioned, you can clearly see, as you're driving on Main Street Fishers, you have to literally go up, we'll be going up over a hill and down towards the back. So, site visibility is basically nonexistent as far as the overall building footprints. You'll be able to catch our clubhouse and leasing office up front, and the tail of our townhome streetscape to the left. But we did remove a lot of those homes. And if you want to move to the next slide, I can show you what the building looks like. So, there's the three-story building. We designed it so that the entire first floor was stone, so that we basically break the building into a one and two configuration, so that we create a much better visual. As I mentioned, this is sitting down lower on the site, but even still, we're gonna take those type of design characteristics to make the building look as attractive as possible. As I mentioned, we did a gabled roof. None of these shed dormers are active. It's purely to break up that roof line and make it look attractive. We went with more of a modern farmhouse-style design, a very clean line. We have porch detail and vertical siding. And we did basically a vertical here and a horizontal here, but we did a tone-on-tone, so that it didn't look like a mottled look building. We're gonna do some metal roof treatments around our porch details here, here, as well as on top of those dormers. We worked with James Fahey Design on the buildings, and it's a very residential application on the project, a very attractive-looking building.
So, the treatments on the backside of the building are all the way around the same?
The treatment's all the way around the same. Same details, stone on that first floor, traditional porch details, the dormers. So, literally, you're looking at a front elevation and a rear elevation. The nice thing actually about the rear elevation is the building does jog much more inward. If you see on the site plan, it subordinates more deeper onto the site, gives us a nice courtyard feel behind the building proper, where we can do some landscape treatments, and some, potentially some hardscapes where people can gather.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's a good question. If you go to the next slide, what I did is I waded through the woods this week, because I wanted to demonstrate what the site characteristics are specifically. And I went to roughly that 80-foot line, just to make sure what was actually that residential buffer. Is it high-quality residential buffer? Is it a thick screening area that is in play? It's hard to pick up, but this is the roof line of the residential building through that screening here, and this is actually the roof line through that screening here. It's actually a young forest, so it's both mature trees that are 50 to 70 feet in height, and a full understory of a canopy, a low canopy, that allows for excellent screening. We had the comment back, as far as would we provide incremental screening in a pine-type configuration. And we didn't really see that application on our site specifically, but I'm happy to provide that allowance to the residences. If they would like to plant them on our site, we can. Deborah asked for approximately 10, I counted 10, pine trees to be planted as an incremental buffer, and I can put them either on our site or work with the resident to place them on their site for specific screening. So, we're happy to do that in either scenario, that the resident feels is appropriate to add an evergreen component in addition to the understory. If you go to the last slide, we went to Google and just pulled the most current aerial, and this kind of gives you a good feel of the maturity of that buffer. This buffer will be untouched in a conservation area. So, you can really see, that's basically where I was standing here, directly facing this residence. And, as I said, I can make those plantings along this line, or just meet Ms. Hogan at her home. This immediate next-door neighbor's sight line is actually much more to the north, but we're happy to provide some additional screening, either on property or on our site, if need be. As I mentioned, when we moved to the town configuration, we were able to pull that cul-de-sac back and increase our buffer there as well. And the other nice thing about the site is, again, we're completely staying away from any of the slope areas of the site, so that we don't disturb those. We keep it, working with the natural contours. And then, from roughly this position down, it drops very rapidly down to Fisher's Run on the back. We mentioned briefly the stormwater management. It's complete stone and gravel underneath our site, so the stormwater management is outstanding. And we will be doing incremental infiltration underneath the parking lot, just for water quality treatment, because actually, it dissipates so quickly. We need to retain it and control it a little bit more. And then, our secondary storm pond is here. So, all told, those were the comments that we received. Happy to address any additional comments that come before the board, and I'll take a seat and address any board comments as well.
Quick question before you sit down, Jeff. I know that Deb Hogan had requested considering rotating 90 degrees the three apartment buildings to see if, you know, because she was concerned about people looking from Building Number One into probably Units Seven and Eight on your plan there. So, did you guys look at that, or is there a way?
Yeah, we actually looked at that, and I apologize. We actually looked at that in the very first part of our design. And if you remember, in the beginning design, we had actually had Building Four here, which pushes everything to the north of the property. And what happens is, basically, now the building hangs in the middle of the air. And so, if you went with a three-building configuration, here, here, and here, we'd have to add that building here, and then this would basically go right into the steep slopes of the site. And so, we really didn't see that as a viable, even engineering challenge for us, to construct this site drop here. And here is very dramatic. So, we'd be all steep slope development, and it's just non-viable.
Okay. All right. We're still open for the public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to...
We are looking at you.
We are looking at you.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
I'm Deb Hogan from 580 Sour Farms Drive, the pesky neighbor. So, two things. Thank you, Jeff. First of all, about the berms. I'll be in touch. We'll figure that out.
Deb, could you pull the microphone over to the corner?
Yep, sorry.
Thanks.
So, thank you very much, and I'll be in touch to talk to you about the berms. You heard all of my comments last time. I'm not gonna go through those again. I'm not going to go through those again, but I did miss one thing that I think is still very important, so I'm going to bring it up tonight, and that is, I challenge, and I, you know, I keep challenging, but I'm challenging your traffic engineer regarding the approval that the traffic is okay. I think it's important that you guys know, I have an MBA in operations research. I did a lot of queuing theory. I've done a lot of computer modeling, and I'm telling you that with 120 apartments at 1.5 cars, so 180 cars in that little space trying to get out that little driveway is going to be a problem. I don't care what your traffic engineer says, I can show you with a computer model that that's going to be a problem. And the engineers did a full environmental assessment form for you guys, and in section D dot two dot J, and this is the part I did not talk about last time, it says, "Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels or generate substantial new demand for transportation facilities or services?" And they checked yes. And then furthermore, it says, "When is the peak traffic expected, both morning and evening?", which is the point that I've been trying to make. So I still think there's an issue with traffic. I still think you have too many apartments in there for flow, and what's going to happen? People are talking about people turning right and taking risks. Well, in the morning, if you guys drive over there and look at the traffic light on Phillips Road, it's already backing up, and people are going to come out of there, and my queuing theory says some of those people will have waited 25 or 30 minutes to get out, and they're going to come up to that sign, and they're going to take a risk to get out. And people are traveling in the other direction at 55 miles an hour, even though the speed limit is what it is. So I am still concerned, not just for me, but for the people who are going to live there, that it is a hazardous situation regardless of what your traffic engineer says. That's it.
Okay, Deb. Want to see any comments, or do you want to discuss anything more that maybe Jennifer had?
No, not right now with that particular comment, Deborah. I'll look at that with Jennifer, CPL Traffic Consultant with the town. One question I had for Jeff, it wasn't, just so I'm clear, you mentioned a 40.2-foot building height. Was that the two-story or the three-story?
It's the three-story.
That's the three-story, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, one last thing, which I didn't hear Jeff address, which I'd like him to, is in, again, that same environmental review, they said they did not plan to build the whole thing at once, six townhomes, one building, and I had made the request that we do something like building three to protect, again, the environment and the townhomes closer to this end and not strip the whole site till we see if there's going to be the demand, and I didn't hear you address that, so I'm still...
Building three is the one furthest to the east on the right side, just so everybody is clear.
You know, rather than strip out that whole middle, and the same thing with the cul-de-sac, start closest to the road and leave as much as you can until you figure out whether the demand's going to be there, so...
Jeff, would you be able to comment on how much earthwork needs to be done during the first phase of your development?
Sure. With regards to the site plan, we basically plan to do all the site plan in one phase. The buildings are constructed at one at a time basis, so, because when you're doing all of the grading, sewer, water, gas, electric, the whole site is complete and all the earthwork is done, and you're mobilizing that site. So basically, that building one, two, and three configuration, I don't have particular plans as to any order of those because I haven't gotten in any of the site logistics. You know, if we can accommodate and begin with the building one to the right, I'm happy to do so. It's more a function of, I'm not at that level of engineering where my site engineer's going to say, "No, you're going to bring everything into this, and building one on the left side is appropriate." I'm not worried at all about the demand for this project. We had to do an extensive market survey with regards to this as one of the key components of the rezone, and we see very, very significant demand. Matter of fact, since we did that market survey, we are running well beyond 100% with regards to vacancy rates throughout the eastern side of the corridor and Victor specifically because there is no multifamily zoning in Victor, and the price differential now in the housing sector is so great because of all of the escalations in cost that there's basically no place to live, and new construction is well over $450,000. So we get this request very significantly, and I'll give you an example of, we're in the middle of a multifamily project right now along Jefferson Road. We do not have that first building constructed. It's not due to deliver until May of this next year. The entire building is sold out. The second building already has a waitlist, and our third building is basically primed for construction because there's just no availability of this product type. So I'm happy to accommodate, but I think it'd be a positive for the project to build this all-in-one-site development so that we're not disturbing all of the neighbors in a simultaneous, multi-phase scenario, and I'll be able to comment a little bit further once we get into operations of the building pads themselves. So I can't comment on that this evening right now, but I certainly hear the request, and we'll try and honor it to the best of our ability when we get to those details.
Okay, fair enough. Any other comments? Step right up. The evening is young.
Henrika Sharp, Fishers. So of course, my complaint is still one entrance, and oh, well, the grading goes down, and it'd be hard to put another road through to Fisher's Run. He's a developer. He takes a hill, and you can take a hill and re-purpose it and things. And as far as housing prices, Jeff, aren't your houses like 600 or more up on High Street? So, you know, I mean, you raise the prices in Victor on houses. I mean, I don't see you build any 200,000 to 300,000 houses in Victor, so that. But like I say, and there's more emergencies than just fires, so something happens there, and two cul-de-sacs, basically, and I thought they didn't want cul-de-sacs anymore because they were not, you know, not good for emergencies. Okay.
All right. Comment, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll just comment on costs and pricing because it's actually a great, it's a great point. We built all of Quail Ridge, as you know. I would love to build that price point again. When we built Quail Ridge, and I'm very familiar with many of the people, I have many friends there, the inventory cost, this is pure inventory cost to go sold for construction, was $64 a square foot just for the material costs. We are now at $220 a square foot just for the material costs of construction, and unfortunately, that is the material cost, let alone the land cost and the infrastructure cost. So that's the major driver. It is wonderful to build those homes in a market such as Victor that can afford those customers, but many, many people are now locked out of the township just because we can't, we can't basically construct in a Quail Ridge scenario. Those homes in Quail Ridge are turnover within 24 hours of going on market as a result. So that's my only comment. I do love that price point, we just can't get to it anymore.
Quick question, Jeff?
Sure.
So regarding how you phase a project, I mean, you, okay, you clean off the whole site, get it rough-graded and everything, then infrastructure. Do you finish one apartment building and get it occupied before you break ground for the footings on the next one, or does it somewhat phased? Like you're in the middle of building one, and then the next one you might start?
That's correct. We basically, we basically start the second one while we're in the middle of the first, in the first building. Unlike a normal residential project where we'll do, let's say it's a three-phase residential project, we try not to do all the site plan work at the same time because then what happens is you get a shotgun approach of the customers picking different lots through the site, and it basically, it really disturbs the current customers that move in. They then have to deal with vacant lots while customers have picked phase two or phase three. We like to have 80% of that project sold. On this project, because it is owned, it will be owned and operated by us, we will come in and construct all of the homes on the cul-de-sac simultaneously, the clubhouse and building one in the first phase of vertical construction. And then that second building will probably be going up at the midpoint of the first building in vertical construction, and so it would pretty much be a two-year build-out for the three buildings, and then everything on the rest of the site will be all done in the first year. So hopefully that helps, yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comments, questions? Mr. Wright.
David Wright, 33 Ketchum Street, also with Victor Hiking Trails. Let me ask you a question. Have you received any comments from Brian Emelson?
I don't recall seeing any, but there may have been comments from him on the previous application. All right, I'm just checking my... I don't see any in the files that I have.
Well, after the last presentation, I addressed the board and talked about a trail on the property primarily for the residents, but also to make connection to the south and eventually down to Pinnacle Sports Center as well as the Auburn Trail and then the Lehigh Trail. And also to the north, you know, getting permission from the Rays to eventually get over to the Drummond, or not the Drummonds, but Kettle Ridge where they have the maple trees and they do maple syrup and all that, and possibly over to the Auburn Trail, depending on conditions. So I relayed that to Brian, and his concern was he wanted to know exactly where the trail was going to be. I explained to him that that will be resolved as the project gets developed, as we walk the property and see where the trail would be best for everyone. Mentioned about the steep slopes. We would, you know, design the trail appropriately for the steep slopes with switchbacks and make it a doable trail. The other question that Brian had, well, is it going to be dedicated to the town, or is the applicant going to be maintaining the trail? And I didn't really discuss that with you as far as who's going to be maintaining the trail, if it's on the grass area, the developed area that the residents would be using. I'm hoping that the owner of the property would take care of that for the residents. Where we go into the woods and you don't have use of a, or you can't have a typical zero-turn lawnmower going through the woods because it's going to be narrow and it's going to be, you know, more secluded, if you will. That's where Victor Hiking Trails and/or the town could help the applicant. So that was my understanding, and I think more of that will be in the further development of the project in phase two or phase three of the, just the process to get it approved as we get more detail. So I just want to make the board aware that we still want to work with the applicant in making hiking biking trail for the residents of, not only the residents of this property, but also residents of Victor and whoever else comes to visit us.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Jeff, any comments on that?
Just comment-wise, we're happy to maintain the trails that are located anywhere on the site. I live right around the corner, and I bike all of the trails that Brian builds. I love this area, it's got great connectivity. My whole family uses every one of the trail networks, and these residents specifically, with all our communities, we promote very walkable communities. We're going to want these residents to get over to Pinnacle, get over to the Auburn Trail, and get over to Kettle Ridge. Kettle Ridge is a great pancake breakfast, which I attend and eat too much at anyway. So it's a lovely area, it's really, really something that we support.
Anyone else from the public have any comments?
Henrika Sharp, Fishers. The other man that was in here said he's going to maintain the buffer forest between that in-out thing and all, because they said there were a lot of dead trees, and is Jeff going to maintain all those trees between his buffer area? And the park man said he's going to make the trails walkable, so he can do that? Wow, Jeff's a developer, he can do anything on the land too and make a road, an extra road. Okay.
You have to own the land. Any questions from the board? Joe, Scott?
I guess the question I had, will school buses come into the site and pick up and drop off schoolchildren? Is this an age-restricted community, or is it, are the, are school buses coming in and that sort of thing?
That's a great question. It's not an age-restricted community, so we don't know what the need would be with regards to a school bus application, but what we usually do is we will work with the Victor School District to create a dedicated pickup and drop-off spot on the site.
I suspect you might have a couple of them.
Yeah, we might have, we may, it's possible.
And just on a related note, I have spoken with some other members, and I'm not sure if we've really taken a hard look at this aspect of things. We do seek around a project, but I would be curious to know if there is any impact to the Victor School system from your project in terms of yielding additional students and what their provisions are to handle that in terms of their system. In speaking with Kim, she indicated that the issue has come up before, and that Victor Central Schools has always been able to handle whatever the load is in terms of school students. I just thought as a board, we should cover that base as well, especially with a project of this particular size, because it seems to me that you could yield a number of school students, and with respect to traffic and the 180 units and whatever that could disperse out into the road, I, as a Victor resident, don't think so much of that as I do the traffic ingestion that I see on High Street between 2:00 and 4:30 in the afternoon, so...
Sure.
I just wanted to throw that in the mix in terms of environmental impacts.
Yeah, no, that's a great comment. What we can do is get data points for current K through 12 at Victor from a school districting and their current capacity and what their trend is on that particular issue. Second, I want to highlight to the board also that the project mix of apartments basically is an empty nester configuration on the townhomes, and then the bedroom, one-bedroom, two-bedroom mix across the apartments is basically two-thirds, one-third. So one-third of the entire apartment across those three buildings is in a single-bedroom configuration. Our target market there is for that young millennial that's looking to live in the area, but what I can do is take our entire configuration as well as, and present that to the schools so that I understand their statistics.
And I think we understand, in having discussions with the other board members previous to this, Farmington is a major contributor to the Victor School system as well. We understand that, but I think, I think we'd kind of like to address this issue just to feel comfortable with what we're doing here.
No, it's a great comment.
Now?
No questions?
Okay. Wes, any other thoughts or comments yet?
No, not currently. We're still working on our formal comment letter for the project, and we'll be in touch with the applicant's design engineer. We'll copy them in on our transmittal, so...
The only thing we haven't talked about is closing the public hearing. It's been held over a couple times now, so... held over a couple times now, so I think we, unless we need to keep it open, should we close it?
So, I don't know that there's a critical need to close it. Certainly, you know, there might be some changes to the design of the project as we move forward. That doesn't necessarily mean that you have to hold another public hearing. It depends on the extent to which the design changes. It's up to the, it's up to the planning board whether you want to.
Any interest in maintaining the open, keep it open?
I would agree. I don't see any harm keeping it open.
Okay, agreed. We'll do that. So, having said all that, unless there's anything else, I think we've...
One more question.
Oh, Dave. Hey, the public hearing's still open, so you're good.
So, the question is, will there be a site plan walk on the property at some time in the future?
If hiking trails would like a site walk for conservation, I think they did a site walk, but for a previous application. If you'd like one.
Well, I just wondered if the board, if the board has, you know, seen the property before, they know, they're familiar with the...
No, I've seen it over...
The slopes and the height above the road and all that.
I mean, I think what we'll do is, Jeff wanted to connect with Dave.
I'll...
If hiking trails is interested in seeing it again, let us know that you're having one, and if anyone needs to, or would like to attend, we certainly can.
Okay.
That work?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dave. All right, I guess that concludes our discussion, unless, Jeff, you have anything else?
No, nothing.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
I heard a motion to adjourn from Mr. Lindback. Second, from Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming.